The Wunsocket School Committee Meeting of Wednesday, May 28th, 2025 is now called to order at 5:30, at 7:00 PM. Rockhold, Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borje.
Here.
Vice Chair Burke.
Here.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Here.
Mr. Leclerc.
There.
Mrs. Costa is in traffic.
Yes.
Would you please stand with me for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance? And this evening, please keep in mind Lisa Mancucci, who passed away this week and was a longtime employee of our district, and she was well beloved and will be totally missed. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I believe we have guests this evening, so I'll ask the principal from Villanova, Ms. Luca, to please introduce.
I am really proud of this group of students and the teachers, Jen Hardy and Shannon Turner, who are here tonight. Jen is in class, so she couldn't make it. This is a small presentation from the peer mentors, which exhibit outstanding citizenship in the school. They work to help a lot of the students with social-emotional issues, academic issues. They're constantly helping in the building with any kind of events that we have, and they did work on a project in the past month that they want to share with you. They did have a PowerPoint, but they're not going to use the PowerPoint tonight. They're going to talk through this, so excuse them if they're a little bit nervous. They said, "This is the school committee." I said, "They're people. Don't worry about it." So let me introduce Ms. Turner and also the lovely peer mentors.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. My name is Shannon Turner, and I am a music teacher at Villanova and one of the peer mentor advisors. As part of our commitment to student wellness, I'm proud to introduce our group of peer mentors who have been working on a mental health campaign titled Feel, Heal, Thrive. Tonight, they'll be sharing what they've learned, what this campaign means to them, and how they hope to keep it growing with your support. I'm really proud of them, and I think you will be too. So I'll let them take it from here.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. We're the peer mentors from Villanova, and we've had, we're here to share the mental health campaign we've been working on called Feel, Heal, and Thrive. This is a student-led body program designed to raise awareness about mental health, reduce stigma, and making sure every student knows it's okay to ask for help. We want to show what we've learned during this, and how to take this even further next year.
One of the most important things we've learned is that anxiety and depression are real health issues, not just feeling sad or being in a bad mood. These are conditions that infect the brain, and they deserve the same attention and care as physical health problems. We want every student to know that it's okay to ask for help. There are trusted adults, counselors, and professionals who are here to support us. We also want to encourage our classmates to talk openly about mental health, and if someone ever hears a friend talk about suicide, they should go straight to a trusted adult. Speaking up can save a life. Our goal is simple: to make our school a safer, more supportive place for everyone.
Our slogan is "From Feeling to Healing Together, We Thrive." It represents the journey we hope every student can take. Feel because it's okay to feel emotions and not hide them. Heal because support, help, and time to make a difference. And thrive because we all deserve to live and learn in a healthy, positive environment. This message is simple but powerful.
We are learning that anxiety and depression are real brain illnesses. They can look different for everyone, and it's important to talk openly about mental health. We are also learning there are safe ways, healthy ways, to get help, and that we must always take talk of suicide seriously by involving trusted adults. We are learning that we can better understand ourselves and others, break the stigma around mental health, and help make our school a safer, more supportive place. We can demonstrate our learning by starting respectful conversations about mental health, recognizing when someone might be struggling, encouraging others to ask for help, and knowing when to involve a trusted adult.
Our four core messages. Our campaign is judged by our core messages from the peer-to-peer program that helps shape how we raise awareness to support others. One of the most important things we've learned is that depression and anxiety are real brain illnesses. It's not just bad moods, and people can't just stop them. These conditions can look different in everyone, but that's true for all of us, and that we hope it's available and it works. If someone is struggling, they deserve support from professionals who really help, and this part is very important. If you overhear someone talking about suicide, tell them, and I'll please, right away, you won't be in trouble, and you might be saving a life.
One way we brought our campaign to the whole school was through announcements. Every Monday and Wednesday, we shared a short message to get people thinking about mental health. Mondays focused on mental health awareness, while Wednesday offered wellness tips and coping strategies. We kept them simple and positive, so it was a good way to start the day, and to make it more fun, we added trivia questions related to mental health and the brain. It got people talking and helped make these topics more normal and less scary.
As part of our campaign, we created a quick mood check survey for students and teachers. Everyone picked the emotion they were feeling at the moment. We ran the mood checks on Monday and Friday mornings and afternoons, so we could track how people felt at the start and end of week together throughout the school day. Then we looked at the data to find patterns. Our goal was to understand how people were feeling and come up with ways to help improve the overall mood in our school.
One big thing we noticed from the mood check data, people are very tired in the mornings, especially on Mondays. Sleepy was the top emotion almost every Monday morning, but by the afternoon, moods usually improved. We saw more people feeling happy, calm, or joyful, and fewer feeling annoyed, confused, or tired. Mondays also seemed harder emotionally than Fridays. There was more anger and anxiety, and confidence levels were at their lowest on Mondays.
Data wrap-up. Fridays were definitely the happiest days. Not a surprise, Fridays afternoons had the happiest, highest score of joy, happiness, and excitement, but we also paid attention to smaller members, even though fewer students replied feeling anxiety, sad, or anger. Those feelings still showed up, especially in the mornings. Tell us some students are starting their days already feeling stressed out or upset. So even smaller members matter, and we want to make sure everyone feels supported.
We started thinking about easy ways to help improve the overall mood at school without giving teachers more worry about. One idea is giving students more time to eat breakfast. Starting the day can definitely affect how you feel. Another simple change is using the first 15 minutes of homeroom for quiet time. Students could read, listen to music, or just relax. It's a great, great way to reset before jumping into the day. Most importantly, we need to keep asking students what they need. Sometimes just being heard can make a big difference.
Next year, peer mentors will lead SCL lessons during the SCL period from 6th grade. We'll focus on important topics like anxiety, depression, and suicide awareness. The lessons will be fun and interactive by using games, discussions, and hand-on activities to help everyone feel safe and learn in a meaningful way. We'll also invite every student or staff member to sign a pledge to support mental health and stigma and speak up for others. The pledge will be displayed in a certain spot to show we're all united. We will also display our mobile whiteboards around the school, updating them weekly with facts, tips, and student create contacts to keep mental health visible and the conversation going all year round.
Thank you for your time and attention today. Your support means everything to us. We would also like to thank Gigi DeBello and our SCL director, Kylie, Kyle, sorry, Kyle Codros, for their support throughout this year, and a big thank you to our principal, Ms. Luca. As a committee, we can build a safer, stronger, and more compassionate environment where each, where every student feels seen, heard, and supported. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. Now I'll go into good and welfare. For anyone addressing the school committee this evening, please begin with your name and your address. Your comments shall be no more than five minutes of speaking time and should be in good decorum. Please be aware that the committee cannot respond to you during good and welfare, but may direct you to an appropriate member of the administration team, or may meet with you directly after the meeting for further discussion. Is there anyone who would like to address the school committee this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the last meeting, I was unable to attend, and there were some technical difficulties.
Your name, sir, and your address.
Almatari, I am the chief operating officer of the district. So I just want to clarify one point. I believe that at some point during the technical difficulties in presentation, it may have been implied that Jeff Barrow knew the presentation wasn't going to work, and I just wanted to clarify, because I do believe that was on the recording, I listened to it. So we had some doubts based on the format, and it was my fault, because I said, "Let's give it a try." So I want to make sure, just to clarify, Mr. Barrow works very hard for the district, and I don't want anyone to walk away with the false impression that in any way he would let a presentation proceed at school committee. We have procedures for our presentations. They have to follow the proper format, and if they don't have the proper format, in this case, that presentation didn't have the proper format. I made the call during the day to allow it to proceed, and it didn't work, and while Jeff had reservations, that's on me, so that's my fault, not Jeff's. And moving forward, we will be adhering to all of the proper procedures for presentations for school committee. They will be in the right format, tested ahead of time, and as the principals are aware, presentations are due to Ms. Blais and my office on the Friday before school committee meetings to give us time to make sure that they will work. So again, my apologies for the technical difficulties at the last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Anyone else?
Good evening. Robert Stewart, President of Wunsocket Teachers Guild, 68 Cumberland Wunsocket. A South Kingston School Committee member, speaking on topic of teachers, called them their, quote, "most beloved teachers." I was moved by that level of respect conveying those words. I'm here tonight to tell you that we, we are your beloved teachers, care, lovingly care for the children of Wunsocket. Recently, the Wunsocket Education Department notified over 30 teachers that they're being laid off due to funding concerns and more than additional 10 for certification reasons. The news of these layoffs is shattering, not only to those affected from the layoffs, but by those who remain to pick up the pieces. When members are laid off, we advise them to look for other employment and apply for unemployment benefits. We are not okay. We are hurting. Earlier this year, on March 26th, the guild came here, shared our safety concerns. The teachers expressed their day-to-day reality, working in situations that are sometimes unsafe. To the district's credit, conversations are better today than they were prior to March 26th. Superintendent Dr. McGee has convened building-to-building meetings, and on May 8th, a school committee led by Lynn Kepiscus and Alan Leclerc held the district-wide school climate subcommittee meeting. The guild appreciates the efforts to examine concerns that were unknown or not fully addressed. Tonight, we are here because despite our safety concerns, WED has put forward a budget that lays off more than 30 teachers. There's also a rumor WED may be considering eliminating paraprofessionals from kindergarten classes, and if there's any possibility, the implications of that would be devastating and far-reaching. Many incoming students have twirling needs, regulation, and social-emotional concerns, including elopement that's running away from the school and the teachers. Without the appropriate staffing, these students' needs cannot be met. WED has put forward many reasons why there's a funding shortage, and I can't cover them all, but WED is expected to send over an additional $500,000 this year to rise, as compared to last year, for example. We've added positions that didn't exist five years ago. WED has had to fund capital projects such as Berryfield Elementary Project, putting some operational funds perhaps at risk when the city chose not to provide a $5 million bond to build the schools. The funding for Wunsocket Public Schools is overwhelmingly paid for by the state, and the state is chiefly responsible for the education of Wunsocket's children. That said, the city provides an extremely important local contribution of approximately $16.7 million. The city has provided nearly that same amount for over 10 years. Milk, eggs, rent, nearly everything costs more than it did 10 years ago. The local contribution increases average something like 0.34% per year. Level funding the schools over many years has deprived the school department from providing essential services to our children. The cumulative funding shortages add up to millions of missed dollars. In light of these permanent funding shortage, it is the school committee's prerogative to consider legal action if it deems, if it deems the city's financial contribution insufficient to fund the public schools. The schools have obvious deficits, and while the city is not the sole or main reason for the funding shortage, the years-long neglect is visible, and it is adversely affecting our children. Money does not solve all problems, but it does solve some problems. The mass layoffs and safety concerns clearly point to additional state and city financial assistance. The question to ask ourselves is whether the needs of our children are being met. If you look at our needs, and you look at our budget, and you see a discrepancy, then it is fair to hold the city and the state accountable for not meeting the needs of our children. May be pointed out tonight that educators and nearly all district personnel will receive a raise next year, and it can be noted that Wunsocket educators have historically been paid substantially less than educators in other Rhode Island cities and states. We make thousands of dollars less than the state teacher average. We love our children. We love what we do. We may not be, we may be paid in the bottom quartile of Rhode Island teachers, but we are proud professionals deeply committed to the children of Wunsocket. We, your beloved educators, ask you today, and we hope the state and the city council are listening to consider the harm these cuts will cause to the education of our children. They deserve better. Thank you.
Good evening. David Andrews, Wunsocket Teachers Guild, Vice President of Wunsocket High School and Wunsocket Career and Tech Center, 68 Cumberland Street. Please excuse my attire, I just literally stepped off a baseball field. I want to preface my remarks by saying that I'll be talking about federal and state funding for public education and how underfunding has unfortunately trickled down and is having negative effects on local public education. Since the publication of A Nation at Risk in 1983, a cleverly disguised hit piece authored by a commission under T.H. Bell, Ronald Reagan Secretary of Education, funding for public education has steadily declined. Reagan hired Bell to oversee the eventual elimination of the recently-formed Federal Department of Education. The only reason the elimination of the department was not carried out is because it was blocked by Congress. The current Secretary of Education, Linda McMahon, was chosen for the same purpose, only now there is a much greater chance that the Federal Department of Education actually will be eliminated. The current administration, which at first denied any association with Project 2025, is not following, is now following that playbook to the letter. Project 2025 represents a serious threat to K-12 public education, labor rights, and the well-being of students and educators. The plans pushed for privatization, reduced federal oversight, reduced Title I funding, crucial to urban communities like Wunsocket, and weakened labor protections could exacerbate educational inequities and undermine the foundations of our public education system. State funding for public schools has stagnated over the past decade, rising just 1% annually on average, adjusting for inflation, according to a report written by the majority staff of the Senate Committee on Health, Education, Labor, and Pensions. Meanwhile, state spending on tax breaks and subsidies for private schools has spiked by 408%. U.S. taxpayers are being gaslit into believing that the expansion of private and charter schools will, quote, "save taxpayers money," when all it is really doing is shifting or increasing the tax burden for middle and working-class taxpayers. Underfunding public education on all levels, federal, state, and local, is causing districts to lay off high-quality teachers and staff, like we are seeing in real time here in Wunsocket, including former teachers of the year, like my colleague in the Social Studies Department, Michelle Almeda, who is here tonight. The district needs to find a way to keep these quality staff in order to better serve the educational needs of the children of Wunsocket. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to address the school committee this evening?
Good evening. My name is Destiny Lavely, and I live on 22 Seventh Ave. I'm a student at Wunsocket High School, and I'm here to say that our community is already extremely underserved, and these negative changes that we are making in our community are negatively affecting our students. We already don't have the same opportunities nor privileges as other students, and this change has just added a barrier to our learning time. This change will increase bullying, fights, drama, and racism, and all of this will more than likely go unnoticed because these teachers will have more students' attention than what they normally have. There will be less room for students and less learning time. Having these big classes would be a huge distraction for students and teachers. This is an academic setback, and students will fall behind. These teachers have always went above and beyond for us. They work so hard and give us their all. Making this change would not just be failing our hard-working, strong teachers, but also failing the students by not letting them get a fair chance at a good education from great teachers. Our students deserve the best, as do we all. Our community deserves a fair shot at success, and our education matters, our safety matters, and our teachers very much matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Michelle Almeda, 701 Cohannonet Street. I moved here a couple of years ago from North Carolina. I moved up here to take care of my aging parents and landed a wonderful, long-term substitute position here at Wunsocket High School, literally the last eight, nine weeks of school. To jump on a moving train the last eight weeks of school is a pretty tall task to handle, but you know, I've got some pretty great colleagues and a great staff, and they were able to help me adjust to a very new system and a new state and a new atmosphere, and helped me to succeed. At the end of last year, I was hired. I was hired as a full-time teacher. I've landed here in Wunsocket. I love these kids. I can't say enough how much I've learned being a teacher here, and I honestly can't say anything better than what she has said. We cannot continue to lose good, dedicated, quality teachers. I was just recently handed a pink slip, and all my years of teaching, including the 12 in Asheville, North Carolina, I've never received a pink slip. That was, and I'm sorry for getting a little emotional, but kind of a hit to my self-esteem. I consider myself a dedicated, hard worker. I drive here every day from Massachusetts. I came here tonight after I mowed my lawn. I came here because I love these kids. I love my staff, and I would like to continue having that opportunity to do what I do best, and that's working in a poor district with kids who sound, who look like me. I'm Cape Verdean, I'm Portuguese. I understand these kids. This is why I drive here, and I would really like this opportunity to come back and to be rehired. So I just wanted to say that, and I'm glad to have been given the opportunity. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the school committee? Seeing and hearing none, we will go into recognitions and announcements. Dr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I begin, I just want to recognize Villanova Middle School. They're amazing students, amazing peer mentors. I want to thank Ms. Luca, who's here this evening, and I'd also like to thank Ms. Turner and Ms. Hardy for their guidance and support for our peer mentors at Villanova Middle School. When we get to the agenda item under new business for the non-renewals, I'm going to talk a little bit more, but I did want to, while so many people are here this evening, I did want to speak to the cuts and believe there's a meeting, there's a hearing tomorrow night at City Hall at 7:00, I believe.
I believe so.
I would highly recommend to all the teachers and staff and administrators and students who spoke so eloquently this evening to go to that meeting and have a chance to be heard. I couldn't agree with you more. I've been working in this district for a long time. Some might say too long. I've been superintendent here, this is my 11th year, and I would take our Wunsocket teachers over any teachers in any city, in any community, in any state. There is a situation this year with respect to the federal funding, which we're still waiting to hear, and there's that situation that occurs every year here in Wunsocket, and that situation is when we have to wait to see what our allocations are. And while the funding formula isn't fair, we are fortunate that we typically receive an increase in funding from the state. The state's really kept us going for a long, long time. The city has not. And I think that if we can show a very, very strong force at that meeting, at least the city council will see that we're tired of having to just do the best we can with what we have. That's not fair to our kids. That's not fair to our teachers. That's not fair to this community. If we want to attract families to this community, then this community needs to invest in its public school system. And I don't know how many different ways I can say that. I've said it many times over the last 11 years, but I'm hopeful, I know that Mr. Perrier and I will be there tomorrow. I think that if we can pack City Hall like we packed the school committee about a month ago... ago, they can't pretend that it doesn't exist. So that is my plea to this community, is let's come together as a united front, because we really are. Everything Mr. Stewart and his union leadership said this evening, I agree with. I know the school committee agrees with that. Let's be a united front, and let's make sure that our voices are heard as a collective Thank you. Now to my announcements and recognitions. One Socket High School Senior Awards Night is scheduled for Monday, June 2nd, beginning at 6:00 p.m. at One Socket High School. The One Socket Area Career and Technical Center Senior Recognition Awards Night is scheduled for Tuesday, June 3rd, and that will be at the Stadium Theater. Orderves will be served at 4:15, and the ceremony will begin at 5:30. The senior walk is scheduled for Tuesday, June 3rd, beginning at 9:30 a.m. They're going to start at the middle schools and then work their ways, work their way over to each of our elementary schools. Hamlet Middle School National Junior Honor Society induction ceremony is scheduled for Wednesday, June 4th. Ceremony will begin at 3:00 p.m. right here in the Hamlet Cafeteria. The One Socket High School Sports Banquet is scheduled for Thursday, June 5th, at 5:00 p.m. at the newly renovated One Socket High School Auditorium. The next part here, I say this with pride and joy, but ironically with a little sadness because of where we are with respect to our funding, but I would like to recognize this evening, and we're going to recognize these folks as we normally do in September, but I would like to announce the 2025, 2024, 2025 One Socket Education Department Teachers of the Year. We did things a little differently this year. Each school nominated their Teacher of the Year, and then collectively, each of the nominations, each of the nominees submitted an application, and based on those, the group of applicants, a District Teacher of the Year was named. So let me start. Leo Savoy Elementary School, Tracy Peskannick. They're not all here tonight, but I'm just announcing them. Harris Elementary School, Chris Greco. Pothier Citizens Campus, Bonnie Rondo. Globe Park Elementary, Crystal Furman. Kevin Coleman Elementary, Emily Cartier. Vernon Heights Elementary, Ashley Paley. Villanova Middle School, Jennifer Hardy. Hamlet Middle School, Erica Jacobson. And One Socket High School, One Socket Area Career and Technical Center, Stephanie Anderson. And the One Socket Education Department Teacher of the Year is Ashley Paley from Vernon The class of 2025 graduation is scheduled for Friday, June 6th at 4:00 p.m., weather permitting. I'm not going to say anything more other than weather permitting, because this is, it's bittersweet this year. This is the last outdoor graduation at Barryfield. As the community is aware, and the committee is aware certainly, we are going to be constructing the new George Nusutti Elementary School, so it's bittersweet in that we are, while we are losing a tradition, we are gaining opportunities for future generations of children here in the One Socket community. Let me just, I know we've announced the valedictorian and the salutatorian at various events, but let me just, before I finish my recognitions and announcement, let me just read a few words about our valedictorian and our salutatorian. Valedictorian first. A leader, academic achiever, and community advocate, One Socket High School senior Monsour Diang ranked first out of 378 students with a 102.5 grade point average. Yes. Monsour has an impressive academic resume that includes nine advanced placement courses as well as inclusion in the One Socket Area Career and Technical Center's reputable biotechnology program. His consistent appearance on the high school honor roll, on the high honor roll at One Socket High School throughout his career showcases his exceptional work ethic and intellectual capabilities. He's been accepted at Columbia University. Monsour stands out as a true leader, academic achiever, and community advocate. He has contributed as a board member of the CSIT School Improvement Team, driving meaningful initiatives to foster school development. Monsour's leadership journey encompasses remarkable roles, including co-president of Student Council and vice president of Student Government throughout high school, as well as serving Future Business Leaders of America as their president this year. Additionally, he excelled as the Public Relations Officer for the National Honor Society and participated as a board member of the Student Advisory Board. Monsour's role as a Rhode Island Civics Liaison further highlights his genuine commitment to making a difference. Beyond academics, he has been a team member for boys volleyball and actively participated in the Brown University Clinical Mentorship Program. Monsour's achievements are underscored by numerous awards, such as the AP Scholar with Distinction Recognition, the Endicott College Book Award for Excellence in AP Language, and the FBLA First Place in Journalism. His consistent appearance in the high honor roll throughout high school showcases his work ethic and intellectual capabilities. Recognized and admired by staff, Monsour leaves an inspiring legacy of academic excellence, leadership, and service. Next, our salutatorian. A scholar, athlete, and community leader, One Socket High School senior Isabella Piett is a force to be reckoned with, excelling in academics, athletics, and community service. As she prepares for graduation in 2025, she leaves behind an impressive legacy of achievement and leadership. She ranks second out of 378 students with a 101.577 GPA. Isabella has challenged herself with 10 honors and eight advanced placement courses and has been accepted at Tubelnot University in Nashville, Tennessee. Demonstrating initiative, she independently, this was last year, she independently sought approval in a meeting with me, as well as the high school principal, Mr. Ernest, and Dr. Holt, to take an additional virtual high school course, further enhancing her academic portfolio. Great advocate for herself. Her dedication to excellence has earned her a place in the National Honor Society and the prestigious Advanced Placement Scholar Award. Beyond the classroom, Isabella shines as a standout track and field weight thrower. Since her freshman year, she's been a dominant competitor, culminating in her second-place finish in the hammer throw at the USA Track and Field National Junior Olympics. Her talent and dedication have earned her multiple accolades, including Most Valuable Player, All-State, All-Class, All-Division, and the esteemed All-American Awards. Isabella's impact extends far beyond academics and athletics. Through the Health Careers Program at the One Socket Area Career and Technical Center, she became certified in first aid, CPR, and earned her CNA license. Additionally, she took the initiative to be trained in teen mental health first aid, equipped herself to support peers facing mental health challenges. Her commitment to mental health awareness led her to actively participate in the Chris Collins Foundation, where she contributed to the suicide prevention campaigns and peer education. Further demonstrating her leadership, Isabella served as a peer mentor, helping freshmen transition smoothly into high school and fostering a supportive learning environment. As she moves forward to the next chapter of her life, there is no doubt that she will continue to make a lasting impact at the college level and beyond. So congratulations to our valedictorian and salutatorian. And lastly, the last day of the school year, the 2425 school year, is Monday, June 16th. With that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my recognitions and announcements this evening.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Any comments, questions for Dr. McGee? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the recognitions and announcements. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The minutes for the May 14, 2025 closing meeting and open meeting will be available for approval at our next meeting. Next, we'll go into the consent agenda, and I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Does anyone want to discuss anything out of the consent agenda? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, our last minute, Ms. Sanchez to give us a report.
Good evening. It's been a little while, but I have a good amount of things to talk about today. So first thing being, at the beginning of the month, Mamma Mia occurred on May 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, and Miss Maello Theater Boosters and the cast of Mamma Mia are officially done for the year. Very sad, but very exciting. The production was phenomenal, and many seemed to enjoy it, especially the little dance party at the end dedicated to Tammy Roy. NHS induction, congratulations to our total of 93 newly inducted sophomores, juniors, and seniors at WHS for committing to the National Honor Society. What I did not mention was about 16 Rhode Island Honor Society candidates that had also gotten inducted. That's my apologies. The upperclassmen have worked hard to get a total of 1,749 hours of community service along with 300 pounds of food donated to those in need at St. Joseph's Church Food Pantry and particular units in Landmark Medical Center. Next thing being semi-formal, theme was "Under the Sea," and it occurred last Friday, May 23rd, and that was also very exciting. A lot of the students liked that. Underclassmen had the opportunity to dance, talk, all the fun stuff in a new gym, so that was wonderful. Senior trip and prom, for those who aren't aware, it was just about the senior trip. It's going to be at Block Island, June 4th, $65 for busing, food and entertainment provided by Ballard's. Departure has been decided, and that'll be from the school around 6:30 a.m. And then senior and junior prom is this Friday, May 30th, at the Graduate in Providence. The theme is Mass Grade, and the event runs from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. We actually had a great turnout. Four tickets bought. We have about 350 people going, which is way over what we had thought. So that's amazing. Love to see the students getting involved. Last thing that I want to mention is our little senior prank, because I feel like gotta have a little lighthearted convo about that, but Senior Prank Week happened last week, and it was hilarious. The first day, seniors filled Mr. Ernest's office with balloons and posted teachers' yearbook photos with filters all over the school. And when I say teachers, it was teachers, admin staff, anybody that we can find in the yearbook. We tried to, like, we put a filter on their face. We printed that. I'm sure few of the WHS teachers can attest to that. The second day came around, and we called this Reporting Day, so every senior was told to report miniscule tasks to admin and teachers without any context at all. That was very annoying to some, I'm sure. And then the third day was Invisible Seniors Day. Take that as you will. Fourth day, many of us drove to the school early and stole teacher and admin parking spots, so it was like a little teacher-student parking lot swap day. And all throughout this week, that week, we also had an undercover spirit week. The underclassmen also did their spirit week, so they were all confused when we were doing the following themes such as country versus country club, anything but a backpack, throwback to the 90s, and dress to impress. So, yeah, and that concludes my report.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Before we continue with our agenda, we'd like you to come forward, Leilani, to the stage. We have something, we have a presentation for you. Please, won't you come on? You, too. Let's go.
She's like, huh?
I feel like I know what it is.
Wow.
You do it.
Leilani, you've done a fantastic job as our student representative. You've kept us informed what's going on in your school. We can't thank you. I'm grateful. Thank you.
Good.
Woo.
Wow.
Ooh, that's nice.
Very well deserved, Miss Lady.
Well done.
Dr. McGee, I will ask you for your superintendents report.
This is going to be short here. The personnel matters, so we're going to be trying to hire some of these positions. We've been trying to hire, as the committee knows, you know, all year. We started the year with empty positions. We currently have three open teaching positions, one custodial position, one secretary, one assistant principal position, and 15 para positions. So again, you know, we're going to, we'll start over next year, and, you know, hopefully we will be able to, and I know we're going to talk about this later when we talk about layoffs, hopefully we'll be able to bring back as many people as we possibly can. You know, that is our goal, but again, we'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to that agenda item. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. And I would imagine these, the personnel you're planning to bring on is going to depend on all the fiscal and financial matters that we're going to be discussing.
Yep.
Any comments for the superintendent?
Nope.
I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the superintendent's report. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Kapiskas, would you give us the curriculum subcommittee update, please?
I'd be happy to. One Socket School Committee's Curriculum Subcommittee met on May 19th. After approval of minutes, we received reports for the CSIT plan at Harris Elementary, as well as the CSIT plan at Governor Pothier Citizens Campus. Both indicated the same priorities, increase academic acceleration in ELA, math, and science, but the focus of the discussion was clearly on attendance and how, no matter what our efforts might be to increase academic acceleration, it doesn't matter if there aren't children sitting in the seats, which is the biggest problem facing this and many other districts. Then we received a report from Dr. Holt on the Model of Instruction Y Workshop, which occurred on May 7th. 35 to 40 people attended from Rhode Island, Connecticut, and Massachusetts. And One Socket Education Department has been asked by IE to present joint proposals at Boston Conference and a superintendent's conference in Vegas. We've submitted proposals, and decisions will be made at some point later on. The next meeting of the Curriculum Subcommittee, after much discussion, will not occur until September 8th in the new school year at 3:30 at the One Socket Middle School at Hamlet, and that concludes my report. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Kapiskas. Any questions for her? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the Curriculum Subcommittee update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I see Ms. Morell is not here tonight. Is there anyone that's, then we'll have her report next month, next meeting. Mr. Perrier, would you give us the financial update?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the school committee this evening is the March 2025 fiscal update. Currently, the school district is projecting a $19,000 surplus as of June 30th, 2025. Revenue side, due to higher-than-anticipated billings, Medicaid revenue is projected to be over budget by about $1.2 million. I am confident that this number will continue to go up as we get closer to the close of the fiscal year. We will be watching our Medicaid revenue billings, and hopefully we will end up with a little bit more money when that number comes to a conclusion in June. On the expenditure side, currently, all regular salaries are $1.318 million under budget at this time. As a reminder to the school committee, we still do have about $1 million in OPEB funding, even though that has trended down recently due to the stock market, and $2 million on a medical pooling account for potential medical overruns. Pensions are scheduled to come in over budget at this time. There was a very late change in the pension rate by legislation, which led to the unscheduled increase in expense. The overages we see in purchase services are due to us being unable to fill some budgetary salary positions this year. These expense overages are offset by the savings in our salary line. Transportation was currently adjusted up again in anticipation of additional busing coming from Ride to support district-wide transportation. We have scheduled it up. We did move it up last month, and we did move it up a little bit more again due to the most recent bill that we received from Ride. I believe we are properly encumbered through June 30th for our statewide transportation at this time. Tuitions to private sources are over budget by approximately $1.2 million. That number's been pretty steady throughout the year. We do have some additions, we do have some adds. Special Education Department has done a really good job managing that this year and looking for creative ways to recall districts, back to, or cross students back to the district when it is appropriate. That is my March 2025 fiscal update, and if the school committee has any questions, I'd love to answer them now.
Just an observation that we're projecting right now as of March, a $19,000 surplus, operational surplus, which is basically a break even. I mean, 19,000 or 100?
Yeah, that's basically a break even. It may, I'm hopeful that it will grow a little bit as we get closer to June. I'm particularly excited about how our Medicaid is playing out. It certainly, again, I take a very conservative line with our revenue estimates and more of an aggressive line with the expenses. I'm hopeful that Medicaid revenue will creep up. We may pick up another half a million to a million dollars on that. So I'm hopeful, hopefully that'll happen and we can close this year with a little bit more on the surplus side.
Thank you, Mr. Perrier. Any questions, comments?
Chairman.
Vice Chair Burke.
Just a question, I may have asked at the last meeting. I did, if I apologize. What happened to legislation dealing with statewide transportation?
I'm not 100% sure, Mr. Burke, what the resolution was. I just know that it's not going anywhere. I don't know what caused it to die out with the assembly. I know they were talking about looking at statewide transportation and hopefully bringing some savings to the districts. Not sure where that was tripped up, but it looks as of right now that there will not be any major changes to statewide transportation. So we were hopeful to get some savings on that going into next fiscal year. It looks like it's not going to happen.
I think originally it was to have the state pick up the tab rather than the local districts.
Well, no, I think they were going to look to rework the routes, in particular, the zones, and really try to find some efficiencies as far as some of the bus routes that the state is running. Some of these routes traveled across the entire state. So again, I believe the thought was to look for some ways to be more efficient with our travel for statewide transportation. And again, it looks like that's not going to be looked at in this legislative session.
Okay, thank you.
My discussion with Dr. Coranio regarding this matter was basically, like you said, they were looking to hopefully merge the districts into maybe four zones, with the north, the northern part of the state to be one zone, and it would save us anywhere from 300 to 500,000 in total. But like you said, and it hasn't moved anywhere, it's nowhere in the General Assembly, and I don't expect it to happen anytime soon. So we'll see what happens in the short run or the long run.
Well, we'll certainly keep an eye on that going forward because I think there are some efficiencies that, you know, we could capitalize on going forward with that.
Especially the outer district transportation that's going from One Sockit to Westerly or wherever, you can combine folks, you can combine students into the bus rather than just cart one student 50, 60 miles. So it would be great to defray some of those costs. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Kepiscus.
My question relates to the Medicaid billing. Do we have any insight, concerns going forward in light of the current federal legislation that is pending before the Senate that would result in significant cuts to Medicaid among other programs?
Oh, yes, we have very significant concerns. And let me take this to the next level. I have significant concerns about the revenue at every level of government right now, local, state, and federal. I've been the finance director as superintendent, he's been the superintendent for 11 years. I've been the finance director for 11 years. And this by far is the most uneasy I have felt about revenues and expenses going into a new fiscal year this late in the year, where we're basically in June now. We still have not received any allocation for our CRP from the state. And again, it's making its way down, it's on the way, but it has not been received yet. And that's not due to the state. There was delays in it getting to the state level, and now the state is absolutely in the process of sending it out to all the local districts. But usually this is done in February. It makes planning a budget very difficult, and I think that's why you're seeing some of these layoffs and job eliminations at this point. I think it's more due to the uncertainty and the fact that we need to follow state law, have our budgetary layoffs done by May 31st. We have a revenue uncertainty across the board right now. I am hopeful that we will get some clarity in the coming months, June and July, and we have the opportunity to recall most, if not all, these positions. The, I don't have the words to describe how uneasy I feel about this budget right now. Okay? That's, we're just going to put it out there. I don't know what's going to happen, and you make another great point, Ms. Kepiscus, with the Medicaid. That's another $2.5 to $3 million hit this district will take if something significant happens to our Medicaid revenue. And by the way, to kind of continue on with that, with this budget, we were actually looking to change some personnel around so that we could even draw down more Medicaid revenue going into next fiscal year. We were looking to move some people around so that they would now be in a position to bill Medicaid going into next fiscal year. The Special Ed Department has done great with that. In fact, the department as a whole has taken a look at what we can do better to increase our Medicaid revenues, but on the flip side, we don't even know if it's going to be there next year. So I hope that answers some of your question.
It's interesting, usually in February, March, you know, I speak to our city delegation to the State House, and usually just their discussion is that they're very confident in what's going to happen. This is the first time all of them really have no idea what's going to happen. Usually there's at least an approach. There is no approach this year. Everything's been held in abeyance. We're all going to have to wait and see what happens in Washington and how that trickles down to the state level and to the city level. Anyone else?
I don't know if Flynn was done.
I just, I concluded. Thank you, Mr. Perrier.
Okay. Anyone else? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the financial update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Ntorianni?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Technology and Facilities update, please.
So as of this evening, we have 59 overall work orders for technology.
As part of this financial is the closed positions.
Yes.
That's later.
No, it's here. It's on the agenda right here.
The financial update says closed positions.
Closed.
There's two lists.
Okay.
Depends which one you look at.
Yeah, because I only have Technology Facilities next.
Financial update, then we have closed positions.
That was informational, attached for information. That's the list of positions that we are currently closing. Later on, we're going to talk about the layoffs due to seniority and due to certain teachers only having specific areas that they can teach. That's why the layoffs don't match the position closures, because we have to eliminate the, we have to take people off so that we can get people who have higher seniority into positions that are available. So that's why, that's why you see a difference there. And Ms. Kitchen can kind of talk about that a little bit more, that process as well, if you'd like to hear more about that.
Is that the same list you'll talk about on the new business item, number two?
Two different lists.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it is two different lists. The first, the list that I have attached are the actual positions that are being closed. The other list is the list of teachers that are being laid off, and that does not correlate. The people that are getting laid off are not the people in those positions. Again, it has to do with seniority and with job certification.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Kepiscus.
Would it make more sense for us to wait to discuss the closed positions list that was provided at the same time we discuss the layoff list? Or would that create more confusion? Because if so, I'd be happy to move that it be held in the agenda till we reach layoffs.
That's fine if the school committee would like to proceed that way.
Make the motion.
I make that motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Kepiscus, second by the chair and Mr. Leclerc.
Any discussion? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Okay, we'll discuss it then. Mr. Ntorianni.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as of this evening, there are 59 overall technology work orders in the system. There are 43 related to technology infrastructure, of which two are waiting on parts. There are zero data-related work orders or related to data or state reporting. And the remaining work orders are related to broken Chromebooks that are being processed. For data and state reporting, while the data department is working on our state reports for the end of the year, I have noted for the last couple of meetings, we'll just reemphasize again, the state has developed and released a new data accountability tool that our building principals have been given access to. This is a result of General Assembly changing their, to school-based management. I just want to emphasize to the committee, because you hear about the reports that go to the Curriculum Subcommittee, that any and all discussions as related to accountability in the schools, whether they're a CSIP school or a school in general, the accountability tools that I'm referencing, and I've referenced on more than one occasion, are the ones that our principals should be using in referencing when having discussions with the school committee. Meaning that that's the true data as measured by Ride. And the reason I bring it up, because oftentimes you hear that when we're looking at the data for the schools, there'll be a request, can we look at a particular subgroup? And while the accountability tools do account for subgroups in terms of state assessments, it's important to note that we have to use the subgroups and the data that Ride counts versus what we would interpret as being important. So for example, absenteeism is when you're out of school. So it's nice for us to discuss, okay, you know, we might have had students, we might have had, you know, 200 students that were absent, but, and you want, it might be tempting to look and say, but of the 200 students that are absent, 50 of them, you know, were absent excused. Ride doesn't count that. If you're not in school, whether there's a medical note or if there was a sickness in the family, it does not matter. You're considered absent, that's absenteeism, and that counts against us. It counts against all schools across the state. So you might be tempted to look into the specific data and say, all right, I'd like to see the nature of who was truly just skipping school and absent. That's not Ride's definition of absenteeism. Absenteeism is just when you're not in school. And it might sound unfortunate, but that's the case. So it's just important when you're receiving any of these report outs that you make sure that they're presenting based on the data accountability tools that Ride shared with them, because Ride has presented these tools in a way so that it's supposed to inform the decision-making process. You take the data, you look at the tools, you parse out what it is that you need or what is you're trying to glean from that data to make your informed decisions and presentations to the committee. Next item is student registration. The 25-26 school registration window opened in March. As of today, there's 139 kindergarten registrations. The number is slowly creeping up. There are 129 work orders for facilities. 69 are currently internal, and the remaining ones are assigned to outside vendors. Transportation, Durham has made significant improvements, as noted in terms of the times for drop-off and pickup. This has also been helped by the addition of the buses from statewide transportation. Additionally, we've also started or engaged with the TransPower organization for our study on transportation in school zones. We had a kickoff meeting a few weeks ago, and we're looking to get some preliminary feedback the first week of June, back to Dr. McGee, so we can look at where we are in terms of the start and end times of school and how the bus routes are working. And in terms of school safety, the SROs, we continue to meet every other week with Dr. McGee. The SROs have created a summer program with different activities for students to participate in. The activities run throughout the summer. Examples of activities would be kickball, frisbee, weightlifting. There's actually going to be a program where they watch historical movies and discuss items. And then this evening, I just want to thank the committee and Ride, because this evening, on the consent agenda, we, well, you approved our portion for the PO to replace the clock bells, intercoms, and telephone systems at the high school, Career Tech, Hamlet, Villanova, Savoy, Pothier Citizens Campus, and Harris. So coincidentally tonight, the Ride's Council on Elementary Education or whatever, I don't know the exact term, whatever the council's full name is, they are voting on their $500,000 allocation to match ours. So we're hoping later in the summer to start the process upgrading our communication systems in the district, which was a concern voiced back in March by many of our teachers. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Ntorianni. Any questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman? It's not really a question, but I just, I understand you have to look at Ride's accountability data, but I just want to say in defense of our principals, when they're in front of us or of the subcommittees, we're often asking for information behind that data. For example, absenteeism. You can say the absenteeism rate in a particular school is X percent, but we're the ones that are typically, Mr. Borger and I in particular in curriculum, are asking, is it the same students? Do we have a certain percentage that are repeat absentees? Not even really talking about excused versus unexcused. And in fairness to the principals, we're the ones that are asking them the data behind the data. And I understand Ride's only looking at the data that you report to them, but to try to get at the root problem, I think we do sometimes have to look at the information behind that data.
So forgive me, Ms. Kepiscus, I probably, this is totally my fault. My point in just providing you with this update is to, one, to inform you that Ride's created a tool. Ride's created a tool that allows the principals to actually parse out the data in the ways that you might be asking. But I'm more concerned about making sure that they're using that tool to inform their decision-making and also the committee. So I can share with you, the email's gone out multiple times from Ride to make sure they're using that tool. And my fear is, because I'm responsible for reporting the data and the state reporting in the districts, to make sure that the tools Ride's providing is what we're all using. Because the tool will tell you what's excused, what's unexcused. It'll break all of it down, and also informs you how they're judged in terms of the accountability. My concern is making sure that it's being used, and when you, as a committee member, are reporting out that the principals reported it to you, my concern is to make sure that what you're reporting out from the principals is publicly being reported out as accurate information. In the past, in my past experience in other districts, there have been times where information has been gleaned rather than from the tools. So interpreted, rather than the tools informing the public, and Dr. McGee uses the state reports, so he follows this process, I want to make sure our principal's doing it, because in the past, we've actually, in other districts, reported data out, and then we've had members of the public go on Ride's website, and then it contradicts what we reported out. And my concern is to make sure that they're using the tools and informing you correctly. I haven't looked into it any further, but Ride offered multiple sessions for principals across the state to attend. I'm not sure if our principals have even attended the sessions. So I want to make sure we're having a clear picture, because the state reports, and I tell you at the beginning of the school year, I tell you in October, the snapshot reports, I tell you in March, the snapshot reports, and I give you the end-of-year reports, and I review the graduation rate reports, which we all work very hard on. And I would like to put a plug in, I think our high school administration's working very hard on that. But I think we don't get credit for the good, hard work we do here, because oftentimes our data might not reflect the good, hard work, because there might be a misunderstanding in the process or a misunderstanding in the tools being used or how they're to be used appropriately. So that, my purpose in has been gleaned rather than from the tools, so interpreted, rather than the tools informing the, the public, and Dr. McGee uses the state reports, so his, he follows this process. I want to make sure our principal's doing it, because in the past, we've actually, in other districts, reported data out, and then we've had members of the public go on RIDE's website, and, and then it contradicts what we reported out. And my concern is to make sure that they're using the tools and informing you correctly. I, I haven't looked into it any further, but RIDE offered multiple sessions for, for principals across the state to attend. I'm, I'm not sure if our principals have been attended the sessions. So I, I want to make sure we're having a clear picture, because the state reports, and I tell you at the beginning of the school year, I tell you in October, the snapshot reports, I tell you in March, the snapshot reports, and I give you the end-of-the-year reports, and I review the graduation rate reports, which we all worked very hard on. And I would like to put a plug in, I think our high school administration's working very hard on that. But I, I think we don't get credit for the good, hard work we do here, because oftentimes our data might not reflect the good, hard work, because there might be a misunderstanding in the process, or a misunderstanding in the tools being used, or how they're to be used appropriately. So that, my purpose in presenting it this evening is to make sure you're, you're aware that there are tools that are available, and I just want to emphasize that we want to make sure that they're, they're using those when communicating with you and when you're requesting info. And if there's ever any question about any data in the district, other than the financial data that's Brad, but any of the other data, if there's question, I encourage you to reach out, so I can provide you with that information. I mean, I think we saw recently, earlier this year, there was a misquote in the newspaper about the homeless rate. And, and we had to clarify, Dr. McGee had to clarify that. So it can happen, and I want to make sure that you're aware that these are the tools they should be using, and not take the information, try and calculate it on their own, because that's where misinformation can occur. So my apologies, you're absolutely right, there are subgroups, but we should be able to answer all your questions from the tools that RIDE provides.
It would be nice, Mr. Torriani, just to piggyback on what Ms. Kapiskas says, as we look behind the numbers, we need to know why, for example, attendance is, is one of the biggest factors in our schools, in all our schools. We'd like to know what can we get more, more information so that we know what's excused, what's not? We'd like to get behind those numbers on a regular basis.
So they should be able to provide those with the tools that I mentioned earlier, rather than calculating them on their own. So I'm aware of a recent request where it was asked, can you dig into the data further? And rather than hand calculating it, or taking the data and trying to run the numbers that way and present it to you, I'd be more comfortable, because later on, when I'm giving you numbers, or Dr. McGee's giving you numbers, I want to make sure we're all working off the same numbers and the same page, and that they're not trying to reinvent the wheel and calculate things out that perhaps maybe is readily available to them, would be, I guess, the way I'm, I would.
Agreed. The right numbers, the accurate numbers that, you know, that agree from one to the other, I'd like, but we'd like to see the, the data from the schools, especially on attendance. What's excused, what's not? Because like you said, if somebody, if the child student's not in school, doesn't matter why. We'd like to know why. I think we need to know that information, because that's asked of us constantly, and it's discussed with us constantly. So it would be great to have that detail. That's all I'm saying, and using the right formats, the right software, whatever we're doing. That's what we need.
I, I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware that if they're disclosing that data to us at curriculum, particularly with regard to the CSIP schools, because we talk about CSIP plans, and the bottom line is, it doesn't make any difference if the kids aren't coming to school, which seems to be a big part of the problem. And, and that's why we were trying to get at why, to see how, if we could get creative in trying to resolve it. And that's the only reason I mention it. I just don't want, it'd be some misconstruing that principals are volunteering this information to us. We're digging for it.
Yes.
We're asking them, and we're putting them in that position in all fairness. That's all I wanted to share.
Thank you, Mrs. Kapiskas. Anyone else? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the technology facilities update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa and Mr. Leclerc. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now we go into new business. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the amendments to the non-union benefits policy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Would I turn it over to you, or Vice Chair Burke and Mrs. Kapiskas?
Talk about last.
I'd be happy to address it, Mr. Chairman. It's exactly what we were talking about the last time around, same thing we talk about every time we talk about the non-union benefits policy.
Right.
In this particular instance, we were talking about a particular clause, which is going to, and the change that was proposed, was going to provide that non-union employees could receive 100% of their salary, but that, the difference between what the state was paying for workers' compensation and bringing it up to the 100% was going to be deducted out of their sick time. The young, non-union employees were dissatisfied with that language, because the teachers don't have it deducted from their sick time, and they felt there wasn't an equity there. As a result, there's been a change to the policy, and the policy that's before us tonight puts everyone on the same level playing field.
Right.
So the language is, it basically copies the language from the teacher's contract and the parent's contract.
Thank you.
We changed the title of one position?
Yes, it was a change of the data specialist title in order to more adequately, appropriately identify a particular employee at McPhee.
Any comments, questions? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next item is, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the superintendent's recommendations not to renew 30 teachers due to budgetary reasons. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Why, I can start, Brad, if you have anything that you want to, to add, certainly do so. So there are two documents you have here. I'm going to start with the closed positions. Those are positions that have been closed, that, that we're closing due to a, that, some, let me reword this, some are federally funded, some are locally funded. And we've talked about the situation with our federal funds. We, we just don't know exactly what we're going to get. Specifically, the two areas where we have a lot of positions in our, in our budget are IDEA, special education, and Title I, poverty. So a good number of our, of those federally funded positions come from those two areas. We, in addition to the unknown with our federal funding, we have an unknown with our state and, and local funding. State funding, we, we have somewhat of a sense based off of the governor's initial budget, however, that could change. So we, we don't know.
Right.
The city budget, it appears as though that there, there's not going to be an increase. But again, I would encourage as many people to attend that hearing tomorrow at City Hall so that our voices are heard. So those, the local and the federal unknown has forced us to eliminate positions. Now, our hope is that as we move forward into the summer, we can recall some, most, hopefully all, we just don't know. But we have to make sure that we have a balanced budget moving into next year. So it was not an easy decision that we, that we had to make these decisions. So this, this is a, a list of, of the positions that have been closed. And I'm not trying to rush you along, but the second attachment are the non-renewals. And that's based off of seniority, because if a position is closed, the person that occupies that position may, and in many cases, has more seniority than someone else in the district that have the same or similar certifications. So this second list is, is the list of non-renewals that you have. I know, Brad, did you want to add anything to that?
You put it much more eloquently than me, Mr. Superintendent. Now, the closed positions are what we've closed, and the non-renewals are the layoffs due to those closed positions, and the certification and seniority calculated in. So that's why you don't see a one-for-one.
When I look at the first list, as an example, I see early childhood, paraprofessional, and there's a bunch. And then when we look at the second one, which I, has people, I mean, doesn't, I mean, it does, it seems like they're, they're two very different, we've closed position, early childhood, but that doesn't mean the people who are being laid off are in those positions.
That's absolutely correct.
Right? So they're really different.
Not the same thing at all.
Right.
Mr. Chairman? Then what happens to the people that are currently in the early childhood, paraprofessional positions that you're closing?
We have more than enough one-on-one TA positions that can be backfilled if we do not bring back the early childhood TAs. So there won't be any TAs who are losing a job.
Mr. Chairman?
Vice Chair Burke?
Yeah, just, just briefly, like what Dr. McGee said earlier, I mean, I, I agree with everything that was said tonight by Mr. Stewart and Mr. Andrews, but some sense, there's nothing we can do about it. I mean, people know, and it's been said, elections matter. And obviously, we're, we're living under elections that mattered for this particular year. So we have to deal with that. My second question is, I'm just looking at the lists, and I'm sure there's a reason, but it seems to be that Hamlet Middle School is hit more than Villanova, and there must be a reason for that. They hit more in the closed, and they're also hit more in the budgetary. Is it, is the budgetary because of layoffs? I mean, union seniority?
So it's based, so if you look here, you see that there is an eighth grade team that has been eliminated because of enrollment numbers. So one, one of the things that we do when we project for the following year is we look at, at enrollment numbers. So for example, at the elementary level, we look at what are the current enrollment numbers by classroom, by school? And we look, in, in, in years where we don't have to, in years where we're not worried about our, especially our, our state funding, what we, we still look at the numbers. And what the decision that I've chosen to make over the years is, if, if we have, say, a, a third grade classroom in, in, in this school, and there's, you know, there might be 20 students, and then there's another third grade room in another school, or maybe in the same school, that has, you know, 18 students. Instead of combining and moving and, and eliminating a position, eliminating a classroom, what I've tried to do in the past is try to keep those, those student-to-teacher ratio down. If this were a, a normal year, then we could have done that. But this isn't a normal year, and this is a year where we have to look at, okay, can we consolidate rooms? And, and that's an example of that particular, the eighth grade, that the numbers there were such that we could.
So in the, are two middle schools, the enrollments are so different?
There, for, for next, for next year, and, and it could also be a case of the numbers this year in the seventh grade might have been a little bit lower.
They're going up.
And now those students are moving to the eighth grade, and normally, we wouldn't run anything with, with that team.
Yep.
But here, we, you know, we had to make decisions, we, we had to look for areas that we could unfortunately, you know, justify, you know, cutting.
Okay, thank you.
So that, that's why you see that discrepancy.
Now, just the dollar impact of this, the closed positions that we're eliminating, obviously, are there people in those positions, since we have two different lists? And what's, what's the projected savings versus what's the savings on the actual layoffs? How do, what are we dealing with?
There's no, there's no savings on the layoffs, it's the closed positions. All, the savings is derived from the closed positions.
Okay.
So those 15 positions, or those positions listed on the closed position list, it's going to be in the area $2 million. I think that's really about the fiscal impact we're looking at here. I think the other thing that I'd like to point out is that this list is not final, that this is not the end-all here. There's a statutory deadline that we need to have these letters, layoff letters out to staff by May 31st. And just because we've now, we're doing this here, it doesn't mean the work stops. As we start gathering more information, and as our fiscal, fiscal situation becomes more clear, we're going to go back to the drawing board and see if indeed we can recall people in these positions. And I know this is not ideal, and this is not how we want to go forward and do this. But we have a statutory deadline to meet, that's why you're seeing these in front of you today. As more fiscal information becomes, comes into focus, we are going to revisit the budget, we'll send it back to the finance committee, and we'll have another final set of recommendations on how we're going to be proceeding into next fiscal year.
And we said before, we might have two more iterations of this budget, because we're waiting for, obviously, revenue sources, and we may have, at the end of June, but, but we may have to do it also in the summer. So this is really up in the air.
This, this budget, the budget work never stops. I don't want anyone to think now that you've approved a budget, and tonight, you're going to approve this list, that we're done. That's, that's not how it works. We're going to continue to dig into this as we get more information, we're going to continue to refine our budget, and we're going to spend the dollars that are allocated to us in the most fiscally responsible way possible, in trying to improve everything across the board. That's what we're going to be taking into consideration over the next couple of months. I think hopefully by the end of July, we should have some, a little bit more focus, and probably at our July meeting, I will have another budget presentation for you, and we'll be giving you an update as to how all of this is going to be playing out.
It's a silly comment and question, but since everything is delayed, it's certainly delayed at the State House, we don't know where the revenue sources, what happens if we don't send in the list by May 31st, and we delay until we get final numbers?
Then you have all the, there's no chance for laying anybody off or closing any positions after May 31st. May 31st is the deadline for budgetary position closers in the state of Rhode Island. That's why we're doing all this this evening. If I could push it off another two months, I would love to do that. But there's a state deadline, and there's a state deadline for a good reason. People need to know about job security and have that. It's just with all of the problems with the revenue this year, it's made the guesswork even more, even more guesswork.
Right.
This year.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yeah. So this is, to clarify, we do this each year, correct? It's just, there's just too many unknowns this year where we have to have a bigger list.
We have to, every May 31st, if we deem we need layoff, budgetary layoffs, we do this every, we do this, we go through this process every year. Some years we do layoffs, some years we don't do layoffs.
And, and if I, if I could add, last year, it was because of ESER primarily, because we, we had added positions due to the increased funding through ESER. This year, it's, it's a different situation.
I'll agree. Right, that's it, thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Kapiskas?
I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm just still a little unclear. Closed positions, there's nobody sitting in these jobs that are getting layoff notices, correct?
I, I don't know. We don't know exactly. What happens is, I'll turn it over to HR, they can tell you what.
I can, I can.
You can, you can.
I can answer that.
You can talk through it too, how it actually works.
So the closed positions are the positions that, as of right now, tonight, are not, are not going to be filled for next year.
But they might be filled now.
But as we move forward.
They are filled now.
They're filled now.
So they work together.
They work together, yes.
We have a handful of folks that are saying yes. Are they, is it?
It's the, the, because, Ms. Kapiskas, the layoff, the positions, when we go to close positions, and we look at things like enrollment, what's the, you know, we need everything, we understand that. What are we going to look to get rid of? We don't look at the person, we look at the position. Once we've identified positions to close, if the lowest seniority person in the entire district is working in that position, they're going to be the one that gets the layoff letter. But in most situations, when we lay a position off, we might have somebody in the top 10 for seniority. That person's going to have a job, even though that position, their position is being closed, they will have a job next year. And that's why we move to the layoff list, because then we identify the people within their category, with their educational credentials, and we lay off the lowest person on that list, so that that person higher seniority up will have a job.
So the higher seniority people are going to be bumping these people who are going to get laid off?
Correct.
My concern is, this seems to be two particular subgroups that are hit hard. I mean, besides the average, there's an entire eighth grade team at Hamlet, which we've talked about. Arts are hit hard. There's an art position that's being closed, two music positions being closed, and paraprofessional positions in elementary, I mean, in early childhood. I can't even begin to talk to you about how important those are. I don't know how you can possibly, can't think about closing those people. They're understaffed right now, and they always have been. And then we have two pre-K positions on the layoff list. So we're devastating pre-K, we're devastating preschool.
Those two positions in pre-K are not closed. They're laid off because we had to make room for displaced teachers that have hired They're laid off because we had to make room for displaced teachers that have higher seniority. We did not close two pre-K classrooms that were there.
But pre-K is a very specific certification, it's not elementary.
Yes, and we have, we have individuals in the district who have higher seniority that can fill those positions, because their positions were closed in other schools. There's a middle part, which is displacements, which you don't see. Displacements are teachers who are displaced from their positions because of the position being closed or their seniority in certifications. The people being laid off are usually, most of them are non-tenure teachers, because of their seniority number inserts.
I understand that, and I'm setting aside for the moment that I know we have a teacher's contract that governs seniority, but we have regulations from RIDE that say seniority is not supposed to determine terminations, it's supposed to be based on best fit for the position, whether the basis for the layoff is fiscal or not. That goes back to Deborah Gist, God help us all. But that's the rule under Gist, and I don't believe it's been changed. But I'm just looking at this list, and it just seems to me that we are cutting off early childhood at its knees. And if we do that, then we have a bunch of kids that are going to hit kindergarten that don't know how to play with friends, don't know their letters, don't know their numbers, don't know their colors. We're destroying the system that's going to feed those kids in, and we're just perpetuating more problems. And I understand it's not a problem you create, or a problem you create, or a problem many of us create, but I always feel like preschool gets looked at as thrown away. And I have to say, it's not something that can be thrown away. And I also have to say, a lot of the kids that are in our preschool are special ed. So, I mean, I hear, I chair the CLAC still, and I hate to see those, that area being impacted. I really hate to see that area being impacted, because it's so important for those kids to learn socialization, because they may not be learning it anywhere else.
So just so you, the early childhood positions were all under Title I in IDEA, that's why they're on the list.
And IDEA has been, will be level funded for '25, '26. I realize we have, we're facing a 4% increase based on the contracts for both the parents and the teachers, but IDEA has already been guaranteed to be at least level funded this year. That was part of the Budget Reconciliation Act that kept the government going. That was a deal that was slipped into that budget act, that IDEA is level funded. That information comes straight from David Seinko at RIDE. Title I, I know, is still up in the air, and Title I's going to get devastated, I think. If you're going to cut Medicaid off at the knees, Medicare off at the knees, you're going to cut Title I off at the knees. So I'm just, I can't help but express my concern, maybe it's my misunderstanding, and if it is, I apologize. Labor, budgets, not my thing. I may be a lawyer, but I do dead people, I do probate, I don't do this stuff. So I'm just trying to understand it as a person on the ground, and as a parent, who had a child that goes through, went through the preschool system here. And I know how important that was in sorting out the Ps and Qs, so to speak. And I just worry that that system's going to be devastated, and if you short classrooms on TAs, paraprofessionals, nothing gets done in preschool, nothing, nothing. You spend your time peeling kids off walls.
Lynn, to be clear, those positions are not the pre-K classroom parents. Those are early childhood, which are for kindergarten and first grade, they're not the pre-K, we can't cut from pre-K. Those are not pre-K paraprofessionals, they're early childhood, which is grades K and 1.
Kindergarten TAs are as important, because they're the ones that are, ones that are taking kids to the bathroom or watching the rest of the room.
No, I understand, I just want to make sure that it's clear, because I know Don would want me to say this, that it's not the pre-K TAs.
I appreciate that.
It's the early childhood, which are K and 1.
I very much appreciate the clarification, thank you.
Dr. McGee?
If I could, so we, nobody here wants to eliminate pre-K and kindergarten TAs. They, their funding source are Title I and IDEA. And while we have heard that, Mrs. Kapiskas, but I'll be honest with you, I'm not believing everything I'm hearing from RIDE right now, because RIDE doesn't know. And we have to err on the side of caution right now, because if we don't propose making some of these cuts, we're not going to have a balanced budget moving forward. As I said earlier, and as Brad said earlier, we're hopeful that we're going to be able to recall many of these people, bring back many of these positions. We are, we understand, as much as anyone, the need for our early childhood support for our students. But, you know, those are federally funded here in One Socket. I don't know how many districts have paraprofessionals in kindergarten, and I'm not saying that they don't, because I'm sure there are people here who are saying, well, no, there are a lot, and maybe there are. But we understand the importance, we understand the need, we understand the necessity, but this, right now, this is something that we have to do. We have to look at not only locally funded positions, and we have to look at federally funded positions. And they're not easy decisions to make. But I'm hopeful, Mr. Perrier's hopeful, that we're going to get more information, more concrete information, where we can make decisions to hopefully bring people back and bring positions back.
Understood, thank you.
Anyone else?
The only thing that I'd like to add is, even if we come in level funded with IDEA, we're facing a 4% increase across the board for salaries, which will increase, which will in turn, increase our benefits by about 2%. So we're starting 6% short right out of the gate with level funding. So, and that's not to mention any of the costs of anything going up next year, which, I mean, if we look around, everything's getting more expensive. So that is what led us to those cuts in those areas.
And I understand too, that each and every year, the population of students that enter our schools have greater and greater needs. So I understand that, and there's just no way to balance those equities, other than show up at a city council meeting and express our displeasure, which we will be doing.
Mm-hmm. Anyone else? Dr. McGee, your own call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Having nothing else on our agenda, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:37 PM. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc, Mrs. Costa, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.